I'd like to call the meeting to order. The meeting is being held in the council chambers and is open for public attendance and participation. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Chairperson Silman.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Brookman. Commissioner Noor.
Here.
Commissioner Sandu.
Here.
Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Dale.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a note that Stacy Brookman, Vice Chair, had an excuse absence tonight. And now we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you do that for us?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representation to express the opinions of the group. Are there any written requests?
There are no written requests.
Okay. Do you have any comments from the public on non-agenda items? Okay. All right. So members of the public may address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdictions. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes, and we will hold you to that. And again, any comments? Nope. All right, let's get to the business. All right. Planning Commissioners, Agenda modifications, are there any? Okay. Can we get approval of minutes from June 26, 2024?
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, we're going to go into business items. Consideration of tentative subdivision map 24-02, Butte Vista Estates East subdividing the existing 8.04 acre parcel into 37 single-family residential lots located at 2604 West Onstott Frontage Road. Deputy Director of Development Services Doug Libby will give us a report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. So Butte Vista Estates East tentative subdivision map 2402, Environmental Assessment 2408. So you're considering approval of the map. There's project site. It's located at 2604 West Onstott Frontage Road, approximately a little over 1,900 feet south of Peace Road. It's just over eight acres in size, has a general plan density or general plan lane use designation of low-density residential. That's a two-to-eight dwelling unit per acre allowance, zoning of single-family residential. The proposed project will divide eight, a little over eight acres, into 37 single-family residential lots. That has a density of 4.6 dwelling units to the acre. You would note the 0.11 triangular-shaped remainder, Lot A. That's located right here, and I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on that in a moment. You can see that the project site extends Butte Vista Lane as well as Trace Picos Drive. I love this image because it really shows kind of big picture this area of the North Yuba City, which is in the Butte Vista Neighborhood Plan. It's hard to believe the plan was approved in 1999. Anyone would have asked me, did you think that it would take 25 years to get to this point and we're still building out? I would have said, no, you're crazy. But here we are, and so the project site is surrounded on the west and south by existing single-family residential. You may remember it was May of 2023 where we brought forth the Johnson Ranch subdivision just to the north, and that was for an 82-lot subdivision. This is a great image that the project engineer put together and submitted for us because it shows the project site, Butte Vista Estates East, as well as Johnson Ranch to the north, and it really fits the two together. You can see how when the Johnson Ranch subdivision was approved, it also had this triangular shape. Now, both of those parcels would be entered into a lighting, landscape, and maintenance district. However, we're really optimistic that because now we're going to, we could have two approved subdivisions, they would come in and combine these triangular pieces with adjacent lots and so create a larger lots for each of those. So to address privacy with existing homes, and that's something that you hear fairly traditionally with when some of these subdivisions come forward, Condition Number Six was added, which basically addresses the single-family lots on the south side, lots 12, 13, and then 21 through 26. They're to be restricted to single-story, however, or if you're going to have two-story, any back-facing window sills must be at least six feet above the floor, and you can't establish any second-floor balconies facing single-family homes. There was a traffic study prepared for the Johnson Ranch Estate subdivision for the 82 lots, and so we took that analysis and added to it the proposed 37-lot subdivision of this project. It looked at three study intersections, Pease and West Onstott Frontage Road, Stabler Lane in Butte Vista, and Queens Avenue in Peach Lane. Now incorporating the project site, there really wasn't any significant, didn't lower level of service. However, there was, the same with Johnson Ranch, the same issue came up, and down at Queens Avenue in Peachtree Lane, it's that left-turn movement during the PM peak hour. So the same mitigation measure for Johnson Ranch is being carried forward for this project, and it would initially limit left turns onto Queens Avenue during the PM peak hours, and there'd be signage for that. And the project would be required to pay a fair share of the cost to signal that location, and that was also a requirement of Johnson Ranch. If we, let me go back for a moment because I think it's an important point. You will see in the project, let's go, right at the intersection of right here, you will see that there's actually a traffic circle. And if we go back a little bit further, you'll see that we have something similar up at the northwest corner of the subdivision of the Butte Vista Neighborhood Plan. And so this was installed to basically limit speeding, and so the same approach is being taken for this project. So right in here, you're going to have a four-way stop, and you're going to have a 20-foot-wide traffic circle. So if the question gets asked, what's the difference between a traffic circle and a roundabout, just smaller? And so we took an image of what that could look like, wanted to give folks an idea of So regarding aesthetics and noise, so similar to Johnson Ranch, a 10-foot-high decorative wall or berm-wall combination along the West Onstott Frontage Road will be constructed. It does require increased construction requirements for two-story homes built adjacent to the West Onstott Frontage Road and Highway 99 to minimize interior noise levels. The project will be connected to the full range of city services, wastewater, water, stormwater. There is a condition added for the project to pay a fair share of its, the future expansion of the detention pond. As the area builds out, you might remember from one of the earlier, the aerials, there's actually an existing detention pond just to the south. Okay, regarding environmental, an environmental assessment was prepared in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act and the guidelines. The assessment determined that there is no evidence the project as proposed will have a significant effect on the environment with the included mitigation measures, and so staff is recommending adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. State law in the Subdivision Map Act require that if certain findings can be made, that you're actually required to deny an application. We don't believe that those findings can be made, and so the proposed resolution with your staff report supports the project and makes the appropriate findings. So staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, make the necessary findings, and adopt a resolution approving Environmental Assessment 2408, adopting a mitigated negative declaration subject to the conditions of approval mitigation measures approving tentative subdivision map 2402, Butte Vista Estates East, to create 37 single-family residential lots and a 0.11 acre Lot A on 8.04 acres at 2604 West Onstott Frontage Road. So I'm here to answer questions, as well as Ben Moody, and the project engineer Sean Menard is also here to address the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from staff, or to staff? Go ahead.
Through the chair. I think, reading through this, the Queens Avenue and the Peachtree Lane intersection kind of stood out to me because we are currently at a level of service D with all of this, we're going to go to level of service E, correct? And that is the reason why we'll be doing the right turns only during heavy traffic periods?
Yes, that is, prohibit left turns, right turn only.
Right, right turn only.
That's kind of an interim step, and then to address that, similar to Johnson Ranch, they would make a fair share contribution to that future signalization to actually solve the problem.
Okay. So is there, I'm just wondering, like, is that at the same time as the construction happening?
Well, the signage would occur, would need to occur first, and that could be before the actually homes are sold, and then is the interim step, and then it would be on the Public Works Department to determine when ultimately a signalization or other solution would be necessary to install.
Okay. Also, I don't remember, to the north, what is the closest outlet from Frontage Road if somebody was to try to go that way?
To the north of this project?
Mm-hmm.
Let me back up.
So is it Eager?
So if you're, if you're heading onto the West Onstott Frontage Road?
So if you're, instead of turning south onto Frontage Road, if you were to turn the other way, instead of turning south, if you were to turn north, where would that?
So the West Onstott Frontage Road would take you up to Pease?
Okay. All right, I wasn't sure if it was, if you would go to Eager or to Pease.
It would be Pease, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have questions. Through the chair, thank you. Mr. Libby, can you help me understand what's driving the restriction in Condition Number Six regarding second-story buildings on the numbered lots? Is there a, is there a restriction in the rear yard setback of these, I mean, are they smaller in depth than normal?
No, it's actually, I'll say, tradition in Yuba City. There's been a pattern of citizen requests to have their backyards protected, so if you have a second-story home, you're looking down, that neighbor who maybe has a single-story home wants to have their backyard privacy protected.
Okay, so there's, there's no variation in lot size, no reduction in setback, it's just something that people that bought a home in a single-family residential district want to restrict other people's options to have a two-story home adjacent to their lot. Is that correct?
Yes.
And when you said it's a tradition within the city, when did this tradition start?
I can't answer that question, but I can tell you, it's happened for many years. I know probably going back into the 90s at least. The same issue came up on the Johnson Ranch subdivision, and the similar restriction, similar restriction was applied to certain lots. We try to be strategic about it. We try to look to see, you know, is it, is there really an issue, and we just don't take a kind of a broad-brush approach anymore.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, I would, before considering a motion, I would, I would request that Condition Six be removed.
Okay, and I guess my question is, back on Queens, it is a nightmare, and there's a lot of folks in that area that already are dealing with trying to pull out there on the left. I've seen accidents there. So when you talk about, Johnson Ranch is already being developed, it's cleared, and you have the next step. So like, I think that should get up right away. I think the residents on that side, I, you know, I don't know what it costs to send a notice to everybody, but I really feel like that good neighbor that we always are talking about, I think we need to do that. I can tell you, at least 15 have called me and said they're really concerned about that Queens, and it's, you know, just more and more and more. Going out Pease is great, but just, I wanted to throw that out there for future, to talk about it, so. On that, all right, let's, is there any questions for Doug, or for Ben? He's back there, he's kind of pacing, I just want to make sure, everybody good, okay. All right, so I'm going to open for a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this? Anybody? Go ahead, Sean.
Chair, members of the commission, I'm Sean Menard with MHM Engineering, and we represent the property owner and the applicant on this project. Actually, it says MHM's the applicant, but that was more of an ease for submitting the application, the owner is the applicant also, so.
We know who he is, that's good.
So we're working through the project, and it's been, we've worked through all the conditions, and we support the removal of that condition, but we understand it's been a policy in the city for quite some time. What was ironic, and it makes me feel old, I was part of it when this Butte Vista Neighborhood Project was first approved, and one of the initial things, if you read the actual Butte Vista Neighborhood Plan description, it says the only two-story restrictions are on the perimeter of that Butte Vista Neighborhood Plan. So that's up against the existing homes to the south and not internally to the project. So you're adding conditions within that. But I also know the issue that made the policy probably become more of the policy, unwritten policy, that's not even a policy, was happened in this neighborhood, the Butte Vista Neighborhood up by closer to Peace Road. So I know it's a constraint for the developers moving forward now, most of the homes are two-story, but again, whatever the commission prefers, we'll go with that. Other than that, if you have any questions on the, anything on the tentative map, I could try to answer them.
Go ahead.
So Sean, just because you brought up what Commissioner, what Carrie brought up about Condition Six, was that the one?
Yes.
So this is, this comes up a lot, that condition, about second story, and so you picture this six-foot-high sliver of a window. As a homeowner, I wouldn't like not having more natural light spilling in.
Absolutely.
And as a neighbor, I don't like looking at a slate of stucco without any aesthetic. And so last time I brought up maybe an option, and I don't know if it would be frowned upon, but I don't know why we couldn't implement privacy glass as a substitute for that, where you have a nice big window that allows light in, but no one can see what's going in and or out. I know we have architectural firms, you know, here, and we pride ourselves on how buildings look, especially in the commercial sector. Just, what are your thoughts on that, moving forward if we made an allowance for that?
The conditions that we have have been developed because of, we know the unwritten policy, the desire, you know, the city. So we, that was one of the items that was initially brought up, you know, to have, you know, textured glass, you know, that you can't see through, but one of the comments was, as soon as someone moves, moves in, they're going to go hire a window guy and replace that window, and it'll be a regular glass. So, again, I'm not.
I would say justifiably so. Nobody wants to move into a home and have their kids live in a bedroom on the second floor and not have natural light and greenery coming through. I would concur with you about the unattractiveness of a flat slab on the second floor, or, quite frankly, if I were to have a master bedroom on the second floor, I wouldn't want a prison-type window up at the top that I couldn't see out of. So I, just personally, I think we're micromanaging the market, and the reality is, if you don't want neighbors looking in your backyard, move into the country. You are in a single-family residential where two-story homes are prevalent and common, and there should be no reason that they're restricted, in my opinion, in any way. And I refer back to you, sir.
Now, we'll leave that decision to the.
Yep, thank you, Sean.
If there's technical ones, I can try to answer.
No, that's it. But take care of Queens, too, while you're out there.
I'm not going to bring up Cherry.
You know how it goes, it's, don't get me started on Cherry Street. All right. Anybody else would like to speak? Oh, go ahead, please, you'll have to go back to the mic. Not that we can't hear you, but.
Sean Teague, I'm actually not on this project, but for another project with a similar circumstance, two-story next to a single-story. And I understand your perspective as a new homebuyer. I'm an existing homebuyer. I lived in a rural area, so your comment about, well, go live in the country, I was. Now I've got the city next door to me. Progress happens, I understand that. I also had three young daughters. Do I want a neighbor who can look down into my young daughter's windows? That's my side of it. That's the side of it of somebody existing in a single-story home. Okay? So there's another side to it that I don't think you guys are recognizing.
From your perspective, I don't, I don't accept the assumption, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teague.
The assumption that I'm not taking that in consideration, that's the assumption I'm talking about.
Okay, moving forward, Ben, do you want to address any of that with what the city and this and that? I mean, let's get clear on this. Sorry, I love putting him to the spot.
The tradition. So the tradition.
Let's talk tradition.
There is, there is a lawsuit, you know, it just, you heard a couple of the points right here, respecting existing homeowners versus new home, reducing homeownership barriers, right? You know, construction costs, zoning, the use of valuable land, and so an effort to meet our zoning code with two stories, but also respecting. And so we've tried to take, you know, when that first happened in the 90s, early 2000s, it was kind of a broad brush, anything along an existing boundary, but there wasn't a lot of development in the last 20 years. And so over the last four years, definitely our team has made a strategic effort because every one of these projects, as we go to the west and we do some of this infill areas or to the south, you know, this comet comes up. And so trying to be strategic, we really look at maximizing land use, working where the developer can, can put the two-story in, meeting our zoning code, but at the same time respecting that we're not putting a balcony right over somebody's pool. And so we try to look at those border properties, look at that adjacent land use, try to figure out, you know, how we can mitigate some of that, but really it is, it's not a policy. Per the zoning code, you could build a two-story house, and definitely, the staff's not against, you know, if there's a design feature that's a better way to handle it. You know, we added balconies last time, I think that is a potential effort. You know, they always could build single stories, but the market is driving two stories. That's, that's really the history, is trying to find that balance, but the discretion of the Planning Commission, you know, we could flex or modify it, but that's historically over the last four years, we've been fine-tuning to try to find that balance to respect the existing homeowners, but not just be blind about it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
All right, so I'm going to, anybody else wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask a commissioner who wants to make a motion. Anybody?
I make the motion to adopt a resolution approving Environmental Assessment 24-08 by adopting a mitigated negative declaration subject to the proposed conditions of approval and mitigation measures in improving tentative subdivision map 24-02, Sutter, sorry, Butte Vista Estates East, creating 37 single-family residential lots and a 0.11 acre Lot A parcel on approximately 8.04 acres located on the west side of West Onstott Frontage Road, approximately 1,957 feet south of Peace Road at 2604 West Onstott Road, assessors parcels, parcels 59-030-010 and 011.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dale.
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu.
Aye.
Commissioner Noor.
Aye.
Chairperson Silman.
Okay, so that passes, but I do want to make a comment. I live off, everybody knows I live off of cherry, but when they built on Tharp Road, that little, and, you know, my daughter-in-law had a house there, and they were promised, no, nobody's going to be looking over. Sadly, that does happen, and that was 20-something years ago, I think it was when that was. So I do appreciate that the builder, you know, everybody's looking at that, because I'm with you, I hate a slate wall, but I also don't want somebody looking in my backyard, and that's what they're dealing with, and they live with it, and they have the high bushes now. I mean, you do what you do when you get annexed in or if you're in the county at that time. So I appreciate what, what you're doing, Sean, and David, I'm assuming David's the one, but, you know, make it look nice, and I appreciate that, so. Okay, that's that. All right, we're going to move on. Oh, number seven, you need to accuse, okay, got it. All right, so we're going to go on to number six. Consideration of Development Plan 24-01 and Rezone 24-02 for the proposed Sutter County Schools Career Training and Conference Center located at the southeast corner of Harder Parkway and extension of Spirit Way. Doug Libby.
Hello again. Okay, so before we get into the presentation, I have a housekeeping item for this one. So I have to thank Commissioner Noor. He called me this afternoon and made me aware of a typo we have. So in one of the mitigation measures, the city uses a consultant to help us prepare some of the environmental documents, and so I'm embarrassed to say he did a cut and paste and forgot to update. So the, it's the greenhouse gas mitigation measure. It makes a reference, it basically requires compliance with the city's Resource Efficiency Plan. However, it erroneously refers to a self-storage facility, which this is most certainly not. So what I want to do is amend the language with you to read, "The site grading and construction shall comply with the GHG reduction measures provided in the adopted Yuba City Resource Efficiency Plan," and it would strike the reference to the self-storage facility. So with that minor modification. Okay, so this is a, both a development plan and a rezoning. They're asking, Sutter County Superintendent of Schools asking to establish a 38,000-square-foot two-story office building to be utilized as an administrative and educational facility, 21 classrooms, conference space, as well as office space. Staff of 60, anticipate to serve a population of 305 students, 171 student and teacher parking spaces and landscaping are proposed. The X-19 combining district, this is the rezoning, so basically if you were to look at the zoning, it's this office zoning with this X-19 overlay, which sounds very governmental and cryptic, and then just, they're proposing to remove that and go to the standard just CO. So it was originally put into effect many years ago as a means to require traffic improvements for certain, certain parcels. However, since the X-19 was put into effect, there's been a lot of subsequent programs that we kind of went into in your staff report detailing that basically makes the X-19 district no longer needed because we have the city's impact fee program, we have our recent traffic model that kind of makes sure that improvements are made timely as part of these properties developing. I would, going down memory lane, it was, I believe, December of 2022 where we brought forward to the Planning Commission just to the northwest, there was a rezoning as well as a general plan amendment included, it was just west of the, in a parcel map, just west of the Jeep dealer, and we changed the zoning from, to C3, and it also removed the X-19 overlay. And that was ultimately approved by the city council. So the project site, two and a half acre site on the east side of Harder Parkway, southeast corner. corner of Harder Parkway and the extension of Spirit Way. The project would have access primarily from Harder Parkway and the Spirit Way side, but secondary access would be provided through the Sutter County School property along Klamath Lane to the east, as well as a third access will go through school property to the south and connect onto Lassen Boulevard. Here's the site plan. I think it's important to note that the extension of Spirit Way will not go further to the east because of the existing development of the superintendent of schools property. So it really is going to dead-end here and serve both this property and ultimately the vacant property to the north when it develops. So you can see the proposed circulation coming in at an angle into the property. There is connectivity, as mentioned, to the school district property to the east, as well as to the south. And you can see the building and parking locations. As far as compatibility, you're in an area with, you know, near River Valley High School, existing offices and office facilities and commercial. So regarding design review, this is a two-story building. It does offer significant amount of horizontal and vertical articulation. There's several tower features. There will be a combination of building materials, including metal, faux wood, concrete, various scoring patterns, a number of windows with decorative awnings that add interest to the building. Mechanical equipment will be screened from public right-of-way. We have a number of drawings, I'll just, renderings all run through. Here's a north, east, south, and west. Other renderings kind of of the whole facility. So proposed landscaping includes a variety of shrubs and trees. There has been a condition added that landscaping strips along Harder Parkway must match the adjacent properties to the south, including shade trees and landscaping. We included a Google street view so you could see what it looks like today, and so for continuity purposes, that's what we're aiming for. Regarding traffic, a traffic study was prepared for the project. Estimated 643 vehicle trips per day would result from the facility. The traffic would be distributed primarily to Spirit Way, that intersection with Harder, of 68%, followed by Lassen Boulevard, 20%, and Klamath Lane, 18%. So the traffic study concluded that, right now with the project, everything would continue to meet level of service standards. But in the cumulative scenario, which is the, kind of the build-out of the whole area, it does generate a problem. Not because of this project, but be, when you look at the land uses and when they build out, there's going to be a cumulative impact. So the project is required to contribute to the signalization, future signalization of Harder Parkway and Spirit Way, as well as Walton Avenue and Lassen Boulevard over to the east. That's kind of just to the southeast corner of Sam's Club, back behind Sam's Club, that intersection. And so a condition is proposed that requires the project pay its fair share for those improvements. Now with regard to environmental review, an environmental assessment was completed. Proposed mitigation measures covering the categories of greenhouse gases, geology, soils, transportation, tribal cultural resources were added to the project. Staff determined that with those additions, the project would not have a significant impact on the environment, and a mitigated negative declaration is proposed. The municipal code requires certain findings be made for approval of a development plan. And so we have made those in the proposed resolution that's before you. I promise I will not read this to you. The municipal code requires certain findings to be made to rezone property. Similar, I would say, to the rezoning for the Spirit Way project to the northwest, we feel those similar findings can be made, and those are reflected in your resolution. So staff is recommending you conduct a public hearing, make the necessary findings, adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt a resolution approving the environmental assessment, adopting a mitigated negative declaration subject to the conditions of approval, and I would say amended mitigation measures, approve development plan 2401 for the proposed Sutter County Schools Career Training and Conference Center, and recommend the adoption ordinance approving the rezoning for the project at the southeast corner of Harder Parkway and the extension of Spirit Way. Staff is here to answer questions, and I believe there are representatives from the superintendent of schools who can also answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, other questions from the commissioners?
No questions.
Please, please.
Mr. Libby, that traffic analysis, that's pretty fascinating. Because on that one page where it says their fair share, it would be 45% at one intersection and 70 at another. Those numbers almost seem to be derived directly from that analysis, whereas new traffic, 68% would use the one route, and then it was, I think it was 20% and 18% would use the other route. Is that, like, where their fair, where does their fair share come from, that percentage?
So this is where I'm going to phone a friend. Because Ben could probably answer that.
He loves that because he paces back there.
You know, I don't have the traffic study right in front of me, but, so they do a breakup for, so, you know, say 100 cars come to the site, and then they use their professional opinion with traffic volume data to break that out. That says, okay, six are coming this way, four are coming from this way, and they figure out how the traffic flows are going to come, and then they analyze and model those intersections. As far as the fair share, that also goes into this equation where there's also cumulative impact. So this project might be taking in 100 cars, but that signal may be serving 1,000 cars for all of the city. And so then they figure out, okay, that's the 100, you know, it's their 10% or their 4% of that. And so I think the fair share was like 4,200, it wasn't a lot of money. I don't have it right in front of me.
Well, if I'm reading it right, it says that this project's responsible for 45% of the cost or the impacts from the project on the intersection of Walton and Lassen, and then 70% at Tharp and Lassen. So does that mean?
This is the old, this is the old.
So they're not expected to pay that much of the intersection, are they?
Well, that's the problem with it. This was an old analysis from the 90s. It was put in place before development occurred, and it was, it's not accurate.
So this document isn't specific to this project?
No.
Oh, okay. So I just read it wrong then?
Okay, yes. Sorry. Then the new development plan, they did a specific analysis to really dive into the fair share for the Harder-Spirit intersection. But we're trying, through this, we're trying to get rid of this old overlay zone that was to try to capture funding for that signal.
Gotcha.
Hence the city council moving it.
Yes.
Okay. Does that make sense for everybody?
Makes sense now, yeah, thank you.
Cool. All right. Any other questions? All right, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone? No? Okay, I'll close public comment. It's going very quickly tonight. All right, so commissioners, are you ready to make a motion? I know that was a lot of words. I don't know if you want to just take Mr. Libby's words, but I open it for that. Okay, good.
Is it okay if I just make a motion as presented by staff? Are we okay with that?
Do you want her to read?
I have no problem reading it, but by this time, I guess I could have read.
If I don't get in trouble by our city attorney who's with us remotely, I would say you can make a motion for the recommended action, as reflected in the staff report, with the addition of the amended mitigation measure.
As pointed out by you, sir.
Yeah, I'll just read the whole thing, because I can't memorize that. I make a motion to adopt a resolution recommending the city council of the city of Uba City adopt a resolution approving environmental assessment EA 24-02 by adopting a mitigated negative declaration subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation measures. Approve DP 24-01 for the proposed Sutter County Schools Career Training and Conference Center, and adopt an ordinance approving RZ 24-02 for 2.5 acres located at the southeast corner of Harder Parkway and an extension of Spirit Way. The project includes assessors parcels number 63, 010, 146, and 147, and the noted amendment.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dale.
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu.
Aye.
Commissioner Noor.
Aye.
And Chairperson Silman.
Yes. All right, thank you for that. Commissioner Dale will go to the back room because he has a conflict, okay. I'll try to remember that you're back there this time. Okay, we're going to go into number seven. Consideration of Tentative Subdivision Map 2304, Newcombe Ranch South, re-subdiving 54.86 acres into 234 single-family residential lots located north of Stewart Road, east of State Highway 99, and west of Railroad Avenue. My goodness, you again, okay.
Keep the party rolling.
Groundhog Day.
Okay, so again, little housekeeping. So we did receive a public comment from Mr. John Teague at 999 Stewart Road. His comment letter was distributed to the planning commission electronically yesterday afternoon, and then we had hard copies of the letter distributed ahead of tonight's meeting. And so when we get into the public testimony, and if there's any questions, both myself, Ben, and the project engineer, Sean Menard, are available to answer those questions. Okay, so Newcombe Ranch South, tentative subdivision map 2304. This is our Bog Stewart master plan area. I would draw your attention to the Newcombe Ranch area. If you look close on the map, you'll see a blue line that kind of goes around a portion of it. Starts, you can see it on Bog, the east side of 99 South, goes around a property down to Stewart, and then over, back up, does have an extension over to Railroad, and then back up. So you'll see there includes retail area, office, office park, significant single-family residential. There's a neighborhood park, which I'll talk about a little bit, and as well as a community park. So Newcombe Ranch is 168 acres of the overall 741 and a half acre Bog Stewart master plan area. Little history, December 2019, January 2020, the plan was approved, and environmental impact report was certified by the city council. Included approval of large and small lot maps for the Newcombe Ranch area, application numbers shown on the screen. Also included approval of a development agreement. In August of 2021, the area, the Newcombe Ranch area, was incorporated into the city limits through approval by Sutter LaFco. October of last year, the city council initiated an amendment of the Newcombe Ranch Development Agreement to implement language related to financing Bog Road infrastructure and streamlining development processes. And then, I think your commission will remember, in January of this year, your commission considered and recommended approval of the restated development agreement to the city council, and it was on February 20th where the city council unanimously approved the restated development agreement for Newcombe Ranch. Now I would draw your attention to two sections. Section 5.9 of that amended DA, the city agreed to review and process a draft final map for the Newcombe Ranch project, which was approved this month. And then in section 5.10 of the amended DA, the city agreed to review and process a new tentative map for Newcombe Ranch project south of the future Ranch, Newcombe Ranch Drive, in order to increase the number of residential lots. So tonight's meeting is really, implements section 5.10 of the amended DA that was approved by the city council. Okay, so the original, so the draft final map, it divides 168 acres into 423 single-family residential lots across nine villages. You would see them labeled 1, 2, 3, 4, then 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. Impacts were mitigated by the certified environmental impact report. So, actually, let me back up. And for the Newcombe Ranch South, the area we're really looking at is villages 5 through 9. So it's this area right here that's the subject of tonight's discussion. And so it's proposing to divide, re-subdivide 54.86 acres into 234 single-family residential lots, where 154 lots were previously approved as part of the 2019 action. So that's an increase of 80 single-family residential lots. You see the note on the screen that the impacts were mitigated by the EIR, and I'll go into that in a moment. So regarding traffic and circulation, the same circulation system proposed for Newcombe Ranch is also proposed for Newcombe Ranch South. The original Newcombe Ranch project, traffic impacts for low-density residential were analyzed in the EIR to occur at 4.45 dwelling units per acre. So Newcombe Ranch South, although it's increasing the number of lots by 80, the density of that project is actually only 4.27 dwelling units to the acre, so less than the 4.45 that was analyzed from a traffic perspective in the EIR. And then when you look at the entire project, let me go back. So now if you say, well, you're increasing the density to the south, what happens when you add in the density that's already been approved to the north? What does that look like? Well, Newcombe Ranch in 2019, when it was approved, only had a density of 3.82 dwelling units per acre. And when you factor in the proposed Newcombe Ranch South project tonight, it takes it up to 4.18 for the entire area of Newcombe Ranch, which is still substantially less than 4.45 that the EIR analyzed, and it's within the allowable density that the plan approved for this area, which is 2 to 8 dwelling units. Parks, always like talking about parks. So Newcombe Ranch has a number of park amenities proposed, includes a .97 acre neighborhood park, and that would be located on this parcel A. Includes a 3.79 acre community park, that would be labeled parcel B, and then a 6.25 acre joint-use community park drainage pond, so think of soccer fields, passive recreation, that type of thing, would be on parcel C. And I bring that up just so, because when you first look at Newcombe Ranch South, you don't see any park facilities, and so I want to kind of give you the big-picture view. So the city, for all of these lots, will collect the existing park and recreation impact fee, which this year is 45, just over $4,500 per single-family dwelling. The restated development agreement requires an additional contribution of impact fees of $3,200 per single-family residential unit for neighborhood parks. The restated DA requires that before the 117th building permit in Villages 1 and 2, that the neighborhood park must be constructed and dedicated to the city. And then for Newcombe Ranch South, proposed condition 56 specifies that by the 98th certificate of occupancy, land dedication, grading, and installing of drainage improvements must occur for the community park. And so that would be along parcel B and dedication of the land. So regarding environmental, as I said, environmental impact report was certified for the project for the Newcombe Ranch area. The certified ER looked at the project at what's called a project level of analysis. What that means is that, once adopted, no additional environmental review would be necessary if you're consistent with the project, the EIR analysis, and you comply with the mitigation measures. Now there's other portions of the Bog Stewart master plan, which were not analyzed at a project level. And I would bring to your attention the, you might remember the West Railroad subdivision that I think we brought forward in January of this year. That subdivision, located to the north, it was in an area that was actually only analyzed programmatically. To try to make that real for people, I'd say, "Well, that's environmental analysis at sequoia at 10,000 feet" versus more detailed analysis occurred for the Newcombe Ranch area. So going forward, as certain other areas of the Bog Stewart master plan build out, you're going to see subsequent environmental documents prepared. But there was additional analysis done for this area. It's important to note, the city council adopted findings of over eighty consideration for impacts that could not be mitigated to a less significant level as part of adoption of the EIR. So Newcombe Ranch South is consistent with the low-density residential land use designation, 2 to 8 dwelling units to the acre that was analyzed in the plan. It's also proposed at a density of 4.27 dwelling units per acre, and even increasing the lots, number of lots by 80. It's still less than the 4.45 dwelling units that was analyzed in the EIR. And so, as I noted earlier, if approved, the overall density of the project goes from 3.82 to 4.18 dwelling units to the acre. All mitigation measures adopted as part of the Bog Stewart master plan and the previously approved Newcombe Ranch small lot map will be carried forward into the Newcombe Ranch South project. We did update conditions to address specific circumstances that are applicable to the proposed project. No additional environmental review is required for the Newcombe Ranch South tentative subdivision map because the map is consistent with and has been fully environmentally assessed in the previously certified EIR. You saw this from our first project tonight, map findings. If you can make any one of those findings, then the map act, as well as municipal code, require that you actually deny a project. We don't feel those findings can be made. We've made appropriate findings in the resolution that's proposed for you this evening. Recommendation: We're recommending you conduct a public hearing, make those findings, and adopt a resolution, the Planning Commission. Making the determination of Newcombe Ranch South tentative subdivision map is consistent with and fully environmentally assessed in the certified environmental impact report for Bog Stewart master plan and Newcombe Ranch portion of the plan, and no additional environmental review is necessary. And approving tentative subdivision map 2304, Newcombe Ranch South, remapping of villages 5 through 9 of the Newcombe Ranch subdivision, creating 234 single-family residential lots, where 154 lots were previously approved on 54.86 acres, together with the conditions of approval and the Bog Stewart master plan mitigation measures located north of Stewart Road, east of State Highway 99, west of Railroad Avenue, and the homes located along Elvallis Circle, Los Bravos Drive, and a special parcel 5524005, 16, and 018. That will conclude my comments. And as I said, the project engineer, Sean Menard, is here to answer questions, as well as myself and Ben Moody. Thank you.
Okay, we'll open to the commissioners, but we do have the letter, Mr. Teague. Thank you very much. I love how you started a very positive, and then... Doug, is it possible to address his two questions from here? To just make it easy, make it open, understand for you, hopefully? Could we do that, or do you want to wait till public comments?
So, I'll say, as an update, so I had an extensive conversation with Mr. Teague yesterday morning, by phone. And so there's, on the east side of the project, there is a strip of land 30 feet wide. And I think rightfully so, Mr. Teague is concerned about, well, what happens with that? Well, the applicant has been going through a process. It has had a clouded title on it, and so they've been going through the legal process to get that property in their name. They have been paying taxes on it, as I understand it, for many years. And so I had talked to Mr. Teague about, well, the couple options that could occur. And then afterwards, the project engineer made me aware that they actually have been successful in the courts to have the property put in their name. And so they're working with the title company now to get that perfected. So in reality, that 30 feet is a part of the project, and the lots on the east side of the proposed subdivision will be, that 30 feet will be included in there, in those lots.
For the future maintenance, upkeep, security that he had addressed.
And staff shared the same concern that he has, that if the developers weren't successful, that, well, it's not their property, then whose property is it?
Right.
So, very much understand that concern.
Okay, perfect.
And then, I think question two was, are proposed development maps, drawings, specifications, et cetera, available? Wishes to have information regarding subdivision and development grading. Okay, so for, at the tentative map stage, you'll see the road cross-sections. You will see the level of detail on the tentative map. Once a project is approved, once you have a tentative map approval, it's at that time where the project engineer will go into design and do final drainage plans, those types of things, and will submit those to the city for review. That work has not happened yet. Now, to address Mr. Teague's concern, is you would actually see a note on the, let me press the right button. There's actually a note on the tentative map that talks about addressing drainage concerns that Mr. Teague has over here, adjacent to his property at the southeast corner of the project site. And so Sean is here, he can address some of the details of what that solution may look like.
Okay. Well, I do appreciate this, because it helps us as well. So is there any other questions from the commissioners to Mr. Libby?
Just so I understand, so that 30 feet sounds like it's being resolved. And when it is, those lots on that eastern border, they'll, that 30 feet will become part of their backyards?
It'll become part of the subdivision lots for Newcombe Ranch South.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'll be, it'll be part of someone's lot. It's not going to be...
It's not going to be no man's land.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me. Through the chair?
Yes.
Thank you. So Doug, just one last point of clarification on that. If we're approving a tentative map that excludes that 30 feet? No, it includes the, it includes the 30.
So those lots currently include that 30 foot?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually, both scenarios were being covered. So they're going through that quiet title process. And so, like I said, if they were successful, it includes those as part of their subdivision lots. If it doesn't, then they would have been excluded out.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Mr. Teague, did you want to?
I just need to make sure that the drainage issue, which has always been on my mind, is going to be resolved in some way. I can work with, hopefully Sean will be able to comment on it. The 30-foot thing was kind of a new thing. A glitch, seems like, along the way. So anyway, but if you could comment on the drainage, that would be great.
Perfect. Mr. Menard?
I made comments about what I thought.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Sean Menard with MHM Engineering, represent the applicant and owner on this property. Yeah, it's kind of going down memory lane tonight. I first had the project in Butte Vista neighborhood, and then the second project that was on here, David and I had the luxury of developing that in the early 2000s. And then now this project that we started in 2013.
It's crazy, I know, yeah.
So we've been looking at different things, and one of the things is getting the additional lots. We found after we got into the performance and stuff that, you know, there's a lot of money to be spent. And also, the market's kind of changed from 13 years ago. They are going to, the standard lot is more a 50 or 55-foot lot versus when we started this, 65, 60 foot. So this reflects the market change since we started this project. So, and plus the desire of some of the potential buyers. And so, so to answer some of the questions that came up tonight on the drainage, we've been, we've known that's been a concern of Mr. Teague's for quite some time. This time, we made a, put a big note on the tentative map to make it very clear. And it'll probably be a combination of a drain that goes out to the road. When I say the road, Stewart Road, and we'll pick it up in the storm drain system out there. But we'll also be, as you get further to the north and you pick up water, it'll be too far to go out to Stewart. So then you run the drainage down the lot lines out to the road and into the road system drainage. I don't know if anybody knows what subdivision called Rolling Rock? It's just north of Butte Vista School.
Oh, yeah.
Again, that's a project we did many years ago, and it had a similar situation. And if you go look at the plan, you'll see drains that picked up the drainage where our new lots were higher, and then they had drainage issues in the backyards, and we had to collect it and bring it to the front. So it didn't pond on the neighbor's property. So it'll be a combination of those solutions. And we've done it in not just this jurisdiction, but other ones. But there will be some type of drain, positive drain, pipe, whether to either Stewart Road or to the adjacent parallel road to the eastern boundary. I don't know the name of the road right off the top of my head, but Sea Cliff Way. So that's how the drainage will be held, or handled in that area. And so, other than that, it's a very similar project. Doug did a great job. We've gone through the conditions with city staff, and we're agreeable to all the conditions. And we look forward to getting this approved. As for starting improvement plans, this is, this area here, especially Village 8, is going to be one of the last projects. We've already started improvement plans for the first three villages up by Bog Road. And that's because that's where the sewer water are located, and then we'll work our way south. And so, you know, if the market's good, it may be there five years. If the market's slow, hopefully it doesn't happen, but it could be 10 years. But it'll be the last project.
Okay. So for Mr. Teague, like you said, you know, hopefully you can have these conversations as you move along. Is that possible? I mean, I know you're a very fair guy. I know you. And I think that hopefully that, and you can help your neighbors and understand it. I just appreciate you, your letter, your concern. You live there. You've lived there for a long time, but thank you. So does that help, Mr. Teague? Okay, good.
As long as I'm around, I'll make sure.
I was going to say, you don't even have gray hair yet. What is going on here? You've been doing this for 30 something years.
Aging very well. It hasn't been focusing on you.
Is there any other pub... Oh, sorry.
I just had a couple of quick things. I was going to, from an engineering standpoint, you feel that you can address the drainage concerns that Mr. Teague has expressed?
Oh, absolutely. First, we'll try to make the lots match as possible, close as possible as sheet flows on. Secondly, there's numerous ways to address it, and we've done it on other projects, so it will be solved.
And the reason why I ask that is because these meetings are recorded, and I wanted to give Mr.
Yeah.
That assurance that it can be addressed. The other thing I thought I'd touch on real quick is the cost of infrastructure that the developer is spending to, for this area. Do you have any of those figures?
I've got too many figures on this. The main infrastructure, we call the backbone infrastructure, it's like $30 million. When you count the detention pond, Phillips Road, Newcombe Ranch, the little frontage on Stewart, it's about $30 million that's backbone infrastructure that'll be for this whole project.
Yeah.
The number of lots are important, the commercial getting approved, all that factors in.
Okay. All right, is there...
Oh, yes, go ahead. Yes, I do. Mr. Menard, if, one of the things, and Doug may be speaking to this, maybe I've missed it, but Mr. Teague was concerned about being notified as these projects were going through and getting final approval. And I know there's been assurances made that he'll be included, but where's the mechanism to make sure that happens? And God forbid, because you do look young, and you're going to live in a long, long time, but buses are rampant, and you never know when something tragic's going to happen. And so, God forbid that happened, but if you disappear, where's Mr. Teague's assurance that as this project proceeds and those plans are being developed and getting ready to be implemented, that he's, the request he's had to be included in that and be aware of that's going to follow through?
I think that's a big postie note. That too, yeah. I'll let Mr. Libby.
Yeah, if I could just, real quick, and Doug's hit on it, but we've heard Mr. Teague, we've heard the neighbors. And really, this is a second bite at the apple with them redoing this map. And so we memorialize this, so if we're all gone, there's conditions of approval 32 and 33 that specifically discuss the drainage and the 30 for easement. And so they'll live that, so if we're gone, those conditions need to be satisfied before the improvements occur. As far as communication, you know, really, we don't have a mechanism, to be blunt. I really recommend that, because where we're at is this is a public hearing for the development. And so the next step is the improvement plans, that's handled internal with staff and how that's coordinated. And so I would strongly recommend that, should this, because this is a 20-year-life map with extensions. So this might, you know, depending on how floodplains, timing with the market, if it doesn't happen for 25 years, really, the neighbors need to be proactive, and they could always reach out to the city and ask for those, that's public records of when those improvements are coming. So when you see
I like it.
Construction work to the north, it's definitely, you know, we'll try, if it happens immediately, we definitely try to be proactive and include you. But if 10 years go by, please, it really is, the neighbors need to reach out and find out.
And that was part of the reason I answered the question, because I know once the map's approved, everything is basically administrative and design review internally to the city.
My gut tells me Mr. Teague will be right on top of that. And we always have Ashley, too. She'll be here for another 30, so we're good.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Anybody else? Wow, okay. I'm going to close the public here. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. Go ahead, please. Open it back up. You'll have to go to the mic.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Turn your mic. Oh, there you go.
Patricia Leland, and I am a resident on Elvallis Circle. I have been for over 25 years. My neighbor's here. That's why I thought they might have
Hi, neighbors.
commentary, because I knew this would close quickly. So I guess my comments are just really unplanned, so I've got a few notes.
Okay.
However, I was here the night that this was revealed on the worst storm in 20 years in Yuba City, wherein hardly anyone came out. This has been a, from a resident's perspective. And I've been a public sector employee for over 24 years. So I've been involved in these sorts of processes for a long time. A lot has happened, and with the turnover of the commission, and with the turnover of city council members over even the span of time from this particular project, I think a lot is lost every time someone new comes on board. And a few minor examples, when it rolled out that night, we were asked if we wanted to receive information on this project going forward. And we provided our contact information. If you look at the map, there's not too many of us, okay? When the original vote started back when, with the county in this area, it was voted down. And when I came to the meeting, it was very cryptic, this meeting on a storm. We thought the back door was actually being ripped off of this building. There was concern. Ben, you were here. And you didn't know what it was when it was revealed. And it was just, wow, if people knew what this was, they might have showed up. And my question that night was, the elephant in the room was, we voted this down, why are we here? And I do have knowledge that the votes were, like any election you'd love to have, you keep manipulating the votes until you get the answer that you want. So that's what happened in this situation. The area that was, the residents that voted, they narrowed and narrowed and narrowed until, and then they changed how the votes would be counted, not based on parcels, but based on acreage or some other creative method. So that was the beginning of pretty much many steps of this process. They, the city council members influenced the county board of supervisors to ignore, in their planning, the county, this area of the county, so that this could proceed. And there was a lot of buzz about, maybe Costco will come into that corner slot there on Bog and 99. And I'm a 1988 member of Costco, so since 1988... So since 1988, so a big fan, they wouldn't move into, because of the traffic.
Okay.
These are some of the smallest streets. They're not gonna add another street or signal on Highway 99 to get the mass amount of people in this area. I'm from Southern California, so I know what tight development is and waving in to your neighbor in the bathroom. And now, we're adding 50% density. That's parking. That's getting out of this area, even with added streets, is extreme. I don't know if any of you live in the area, it will, when this is done, it's gonna be a mess to get out of there. Berry School, you've got the other school on Stewart, and then you're gonna have some sort of commercial development on Boge. There've been numerous.
We're gonna have to wrap it up, so.
Okay. So when I asked for communication, I didn't get it. And there, you know, there was a dozen people. This should not have been a difficult thing to do. I still have the notice of the public hearing that was postmarked on the day that the hearing took place. So I never could have possibly gotten it the same day. So that's the communication you cannot rely upon, and I asked for that again, because I think the notice is like a 300-foot? Is it 300 yards? What did you tell me, Doug?
State law requires a minimum of 300 feet.
300 feet on this size of a project. So that's, that's criminal, that this would happen and not be notified to the residents in the area. This isn't a mother-in-law unit in a, in someone's backyard. This is massive.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to cut you down. It's, you're well over your three minutes. Let's give this the last bit of piece that you wanna go with.
What I wanna say is that, so now, this is a 50% increase in density, so a 50% more profit. I'd love to have a business where I could file with the city and just submit new plans where I would gain a 50% profit on what had already been proposed, reviewed, studied. And the nightmare of this area to the whole community, because it's right down 99, so it's not just gonna be the residents in our area, it's gonna be the whole town, because that's how you get out.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to the three minutes? Ben? I guess I wanna just, I don't, I was here on the commission on certain phases, but I don't know what this voted down means. I don't understand. Is that when it was annexed? You're gonna have to explain that a little bit to me.
Yeah, I mean, not to.
And you have three minutes. Sorry.
You know, not to downplay the experience, right? This is her experience, what specific notice is went to Ms. Leland, I'm not positive. I will, what I hear and from my, from staff level, is that this is a longstanding project, as Sean mentioned, from 2013, and it's very multi-step, multi-processes, because it included an initial survey by the city to, to the community to find out, was there, was there interest in expanding the sphere? There was coordination with the county as far as, and to look at expanding the sphere and how far to go. And so, as far as the official vote, I'm not sure if that was real or if that was a survey. There was a vote for the annexation that included only the properties. And that, and so, there wasn't an official vote for that area, for the area to the east that she, as far as coming into the city. But it was, there was a vote for LAFCO to expand the sphere. And so, you know, I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
And so, then you have your environmental notice, you know, you have this whole environmental review, the document, master plans, you know, specific DA agreements, you name it, zoning, subdivisions. There was a lot of different elements to this that occurred over this decade-plus of time. And so, I'm not quite sure, maybe the full comprehension and then the noticing and the public workshops of what, what, how that articulated out to the common person.
Okay.
So definitely, whatever we could do to help, you know, but, but there is a public process, it was followed.
Okay. That's, I, I really wanted to hear that. Is there any other? You have a?
Just for point of clarification, there was, there was a, a, a statement made that the density increased by 50%. I didn't see anything in the staff report or anything else that said that, that the density increased by 50%.
So.
It was less than.
So we're looking at numbers. So this is a strong point for me. The dense, the general plan density for single-family in Yuba City is allowed to be two to eight. This project is well within all the studies that were done for traffic, and it's still around four. And so, we're still within the allowable density in Yuba City, because we're not even close to that eight number. We're staying within four, we're staying with all the studies for what the requirements are for the infrastructure. The, the number, 80 units, sounds big. 80 units in relation to the units tonight, I think that's where that number of 50%.
It was in 80%. There was a close to a 50, 55% increase in the number of lots, but the impact on the density per unit was still less than the 4.45 that was addressed in the EIR document. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And I'm, any other questions? We're good? All right. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we make the necessary findings to adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission, the seat of Yuba City, making determination that Newcombe Ranch South tentative subdivision map is consistent and fully environmentally assessed in the certified environmental impact report, SCH number 2017012009, for the Boge-Stewart master plan and Newcombe Ranch portion of the plan, and no additional environmental review is necessary, and approving tentative subdivision map 23-04, Newcombe Ranch South, a remapping of villages five through nine of the Newcombe Ranch subdivision, TSM 14-07, creating 234 single residential lots, where 154 lots were previously approved on 54.86 acres. Located north of Stewart Road, east of Highway 99, and west of Railroad Avenue, and the homes located along El Valles Circle and Los Bravo Strive, accessor parcels 055-240-005 and 016 and 018.
I'll second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu?
Aye.
Commissioner Noor?
Aye.
And Commissioners, or sorry, Chairperson Silman?
Aye.
You know, what I do wanna say is, again, I, it's, the process is there. Get involved. Call Ben, call Doug. I call every other day on Cherry Street. I know people get sick of hearing about it. I wanna stoplight over there, but just stay engaged in the process, and I think that will help. It's not gonna help, but it maybe sat, maybe satisfy a little bit.
This is just the first.
That's fine, and we, we get it. And that's what I'm saying, stay engaged. That's all I'm saying, and I appreciate that. All right. Oh, they let you come back. All right, we're gonna keep going. Thank you for coming, for sure. All right, Plumas Plaza Name and Mural Ad Hoc Committee. I'm hoping that the audience will stay. Don't you wanna be on that committee?
Is anyone here or what?
Excuse me, Mr. Alonso. We're in, yeah, we're in session. Well, it's on the agenda. I'm sorry.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Teague, just a, just a personal question, Mr., did you teach at Yuba College or have you taught? Have you ever been a teacher or taught at Yuba College or? Yes, sir.
You.
Uh-huh. Okay. You just look really familiar and your name sounds familiar. I'm like, I think I know this gentleman, I wanted to make that connection, so that's all. Thank you.
And he's staying, so maybe he'll be a part of the mural. Okay.
I asked him something similar, so he's probably feeling more.
We thought you were, we thought you were an eye doctor, too.
Well, certainly.
Thank you, sir.
I love it. Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, so this should be a fun one. And I'll really, it's like staff that put the presentation together for me, and this was a recent presentation that went to city council. And so, city council is basically formed an ad hoc committee to help name the Water Tower Plaza area and mural designs down at Plumas Street. And so, with that, they're looking for a member of the planning commission to, to represent. And so, really, the item tonight is, I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna show you a couple pictures of what's going on. So on Plumas Street, the city received a grant to redo the area, and we're looking at an archway, a sign, a community event sign, redo this area at the Water Tower, so the northwest corner of Plumas Street and Bridge Street, this plaza area, and then a couple murals. There's the big wall along Lee's Canton, and then possibly to the north, just across the alleyway there, about some more. So here's some information on the timeline, a $2.2 million grant. And so, some recent work as part of that grant, we, we rehabbed the tower as far as, scrubbed all the nasty old paint off, repainted it, and put some up lighting with some signage on there. With Center Street, we're working right now on trying to, this, I can't remember the name, 14, what do you call this lighting? This, where's this drop lighting? There's a name for this. No.
String lights. String lights. Or cafe lighting.
They have a term for it. It's, it's escaped me at the moment.
It's beautiful.
But basically, we're stringing it across the street and, and there, there's a park element to the south and then an archway that we're proposing there when you first turn north off of Bridge Street. So, so as part of the ad hoc committee, we're looking at designing, getting design recommendations for the murals. There's been some interesting ideas thrown away, thrown around as far as timelines, making things interactive, you know, representing maybe historic stuff from the fire departments or from the river. And so, there's a lot of good ideas that come from different people, and then also potentially partnering with the, the Arts Council on selecting artists. And then, they put Water Tower Park down here, but really, they, they need to name it, and the city's been doing some social media outreach to try to get some proposed names to come in. We've heard every, different things that are coming in. And so, really, that's what it comes down to. It's, they're looking for a member to represent, and it shouldn't be a big, long-term commitment, but it's probably a meet a couple times to kind of, to review these names, provide some input, and then any input on the murals. And so, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I appoint somebody?
Guess not.
I gotta comment three, all of us, but Jackie, go back.
I do have a question. It's beautiful and I love it. And it's, probably has nothing to do with any of this, but again, homeless and all that. So you think that's gonna deter after it gets to that point? Who knows?
That's definitely an element of the design.
Just a lot more lighting down there, which is huge.
Flatwork, trying to get rid of some of the hiding places.
I think it's great, yeah.
Lighting is, is for sure. That is a concern, and so, it's definitely.
Gotta start.
Yeah.
I love it. Is anybody interested? No pressure.
Do you have an idea what night these types of?
Yeah, and how often?
Not, I, I, it should be pretty limited. I'm guessing it's gonna be one or two nights, or during the day, and we'll try to give a couple weeks advance notice, but I'm not.
Like a couple times.
And I would expect that it's gonna occur over the next month and a half.
It will occur over the next month and a half?
Yeah, a couple months.
It won't?
It will.
Oh, it will?
Yes. There's definitely a push to finalize this and start wrapping up some of the construction details and kind of work.
Well, I would just say, as the adopted child of this commission, I would be honored to represent both the city and the county on that.
Is that okay, being a crossover? I don't, does it matter?
And, and, we have not been given that permission or not to. And it's for a planning commission representative.
Well, if you get, if Mr., yeah, Commissioner Campbell wanna do, I think that's great. Thank you.
I do have.
Thank you.
An idea for the name. Why don't we call that area the Stroll? Right? We have the Christmas Stroll, the Summer Stroll.
Yuba City.
Down at the Stroll.
I'll take that.
And then, we're gonna do the 50s song, Strolling Down, right? Okay, got it. I think it's great. I do have, I do, both. I like it, I like it. But I will say, and I'm really excited, I'm gonna, so Hunger Month is September, and we were able to call and talk to Diana. She might not have talked to you yet, but that tower is gonna be orange, the lights.
I heard that yesterday.
So it's like, to me, when you see that orange, you know it's Hunger Month, it's September, and I think hopefully, moving forward, Pink October, you know, whatever it is. I have tried for years for Marysville to get that fountain, and it's, they keep stealing the parts, but I don't think they're gonna go up there and steal the parts, so.
Let's be made out of cotton.
Yeah, it's pretty sad, but it's true. I love it, so, okay.
That is in motion.
So there you go. We have a motion, all approved.
Appreciate.
There you go.
Trusting.
Okay.
Don't make any bad decisions.
Yeah, you make sure to run it through us. We're not going, but just tell us what you're doing. All right, we got future agenda items. Mr. Moody? We're running amok now. Sorry to the attorney on hold over there.
You got me again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it said Ben Moody, I'm sorry.
Or did it?
Yeah. I'm only following the rules.
What happened to our mint?
Okay, future agenda.
What happened to what?
Our little lifesaver mints.
Oh.
Oh, there's.
They, they, they can't afford it. They're, thank you. Okay. Shh, children.
Okay, so we have a number of projects that are currently in process. However, we probably are looking at not meeting in September. And so, at this point, we're looking at probably canceling the September 11th and September 25th meetings. And then, there's a good chance that we may come back on October 9th. So we'll see how the projects come together. There's a, I mean, kind of a slim chance. We try to limit it to one meeting, the second meeting of the month. But next, in October, we actually could, there's a possibility we could need two meetings, so the 9th and the 23rd. So keep those in mind. One of the things we're working on is, the legislature made a number of changes over the last couple of years to the accessory dwelling unit statutes. And so, we have to incorporate those into our local ordinance to be compliant with state law. And so, we're working with the city attorney's office on making those updates. We hope to have that for you in October. Our general plan refresh is still moving forward. There was, there was a lot of mapping that needed to be updated, and that's kind of held us back a little bit, so we're, we're still looking at bringing that forward towards the end of the year. So that's another one of the big projects. So that's all I have, and then I would turn it over to Ben. Thank you.
You know, I think I'm on here just for a quick update for the director's report. And honestly, I was gonna kick it over to Ashley here in a minute. She has more, more of the fun stuff going on with some of the economic development and things happening. Really quick, revenue measure, that's ongoing. So it's 68 days or 70 days to election. That, that is definitely front and center with the city, and there's been a lot of effort from the departments to basically information. And so, with the election ramping up, you're gonna see more of that coming out. So if there's any questions or any constituents that hit you up for information, please send them our way. our way, but there'll probably be a mailer, informational mailer going out, and you'll see more stuff with the campaign. You know, there's projects going on. I was just told by staff at West Sanborn, so, so it's, it's a project that's been around for a while, the southwest corner of Yuba City, Sanborn and Bog, you know, more, more, more homes and traffic to Cherry Street, but. Yeah, we're going to have to figure out that cul-de-sac, they keep running into stuff. But that is, it sounds like D.R. Horton is coordinating for to finalize that map and to buy the north phase of that, and so that's in process. Johnson Ranch, as we talked earlier, is under construction, but they're recording that map, looking to start building homes next year, and then Hard North is under, is well under construction that we're kind of working through on Butte House Road there, northwest harder. I could go into, you know, we met at the 99 cent store today, I don't know if we've met since then, but that's been purchased by some local partners, and it's, it's going to be a community event center is what the current, current plan is, and so there's some work going on, they're demoing right now, and then there'll, there'll be some stuff coming in with that. With that, I really, it's questions about anything happening in Yuba City I could help answer, and then Ashley has some fun stuff she's working on that she'll update you on.
Well, I just have to say thank you, Ben. You know, I get these weird calls, hey, what's going on over there? It's grayed, and it's like, oh, Ben, what's going on over there? Because I forgot. And then I, I asked you, I turned around, and then I realized it was in her development report, hey, we got this, we got this, and so I thought, I'm going to start putting that in my car, because that helps, so, but thank you for picking, texting anytime, he seems to answer, I don't know why, but anyway.
My only problem is I can't remember yesterday either, so sometimes I gotta look something up, but.
Yeah, I'm going to get Ashley's text for next, but anyway, thank you, go ahead, Ashley.
Well, hello, planning commission, I feel like I haven't been in front of you in a while, so it's great to see you all. We do have some exciting things going on, I wanted to give you a couple updates. First, the city welcome sign, I think that came before you a couple months ago. Things are moving forward with the RFP process. So now that the design concept was selected, the RFP is for the final design, like actual construction documents, and then to get it actually, you know, fabricated and installed. So the RFP is out right now, but the timeline that we're hoping for is that bids will be received by mid-September, and then potentially awarding a contract mid-October with hopefully construction by May 2025. So that could be really exciting. Our next shop talk of the year, and the last shop talk of the year, is September 11th at the Happy Viking, and as a reminder, and for the community, these, these events are specifically tailored for the community, planning commissioners can come too, but they're really for the community members, and this one is, is going to be a Development 101 kind of seminar, seminar sounds boring, like short and sweet little fun presentation, not seminar, to talk to the community about the, the process of how, you know, projects start, how they come to planning commission, why they come to planning commission, et cetera. So that's on September 11th. We also have a mayor's bus tour coming up at the end of September. The route is to be determined, but September 27th is the date, so we'll be announcing the registration probably on Facebook, that's how we have done it in the past, so definitely community members, keeps that in, in mind as well, because that's for, that's for you guys. You guys can come too. And then just some, some quick updates. Of course, you can see Harder Marketplace is really, really moving really fast. So the Arco Gas Station, which is going to be in between Raising Cane's and Dutch Brothers, their building permits are quote, "ready to issue," so what that means is everything has been approved, they just really need to come in and pick up and get their permit. So it seems like we'll probably see some construction there soon as well. It's exciting to see that moving pretty, pretty fast. And then we have had a, a bit of interest, I've spoken to developers recently, it seems like this ag tech-related businesses are really, really excited about Yuba City right now, so I've, I've spoken to several about different kind of ag, I'm not an ag person, but different ag tech facilities, materials, et cetera, so we might be seeing some of that in the future in Yuba City, which is great for our agriculture community and for the economy. So, good stuff. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I'm not sure if you've met Emily Rary, who is the Community Impact Chief at Bill Air Force Base, and they would love to add a couple of their leadership on your bus tour. So if you don't have her number, I will connect it to you, she'll coordinate it and send a few, because I, I think it's important, we have done bus tours from the Yuba County side, and obviously, we come over here and they're like, oh my God, you have a Target over here, or you have, you know, so it would be really kind of cool to, even her, and she can go back and tell the new folks that come to town, guess what, there's, there's a whole city over there across that bridge, so, we're working on that on the Yuba County side as well, so.
Perfect, that would be.
Quick one, it may be more for Ben. A while back, you mentioned in passing that you were going to discuss Chick-fil-A with, with those reps. I get asked all the time about Chick-fil-A. Is there any movement, the needle moving at all?
What I would tell you is that we do not want to fumble the football, and so there's definitely been a focused effort by Ashley to reach out. Recently, she's actually going to attend a, I guess, an industry workshop where they've requested to meet up with us, and so she's going to go down in September and meet in one of these focused kind of industry workshops, seminars, and so maybe we can make some progress there, but, but definitely, we're reaching out, we're looking for opportunities to see if that's an option here in Yuba City.
I remember, if I heard right, this was several years ago, that, that Chick-fil-A has some sort of formula based on radius and, you know, what would it be, your, the house income, like per-house average or something like that? I know I'm saying it wrong.
You know, I've heard a lot from different, I mean, from the real, agents, they'll tell you, I think, a little bit of anything. When we, when we've talked, you know, they pay cash for them, they, they do have kind of a ma, I'm sure a matrix-y, a formula on where they want to go. They've expressed that they want to come into Yuba City, and it's just finding that location that pencils out. And so that we have had that direct conversation, that they're looking to come to Yuba City and they're ready to come to Yuba City, is just finding a location that works for them. And so I don't know if you have anything to add, Ashley?
99 and Bog, where Sunset Motors used to be, by Arco, anyway. That's where all the development.
I think we have a developer here that would like to have a, there you go, Jimmy, get out of the plumbing business.
Take franchisees, you know, you never know.
Yeah, and, and again, and this is to Ben and Libby, or Ben and Libby, sorry. It's after, guess what time it is? It's after seven.
Sounds like chicken franchisee.
The relationship that you have built on the Yuba County side, and I know, again, I hate that, that river, but it's been so nice, because we, I've heard conversation, oh, Yuba City has the land, and I know that those conversations are happening, and I think that's because of you, on a lot of that, and I just wanted to compliment you on that. Keep that open door.
Thank you, I won't take all the credit, I have great leadership, so, yeah, thanks.
Nothing for me.